I said that the last one was the final, but in reality, the professor just gave us a final study. Practice exam sample problems document, and I figured I might as well go through all of them. As that'll be pretty fun. Uh, control V, perfect. We only need to show one of the methods, so I'm not gonna do the CD method. As he said on the exam, you only need one of the methods. If you know that one method, either or, you're good. So now let's see what the actual assignment is. This is a rather long one now that I look at it, but you know what? That's perfectly fine. Okay. Either you made a bad joke, or you are intentionally hurting author's feelings. If you were sensitive to the situation, then you would not have made a bad joke. And if you wanted to hurt author's feelings, you would have been more direct. But if you were more direct, I would have slapped you. And I did not slap you. Therefore, you were not sensitive to the situation. Let's look at what I wrote. Awesome. I got this one confirmed by the professor. So I know this one is right. A, you made a bad joke. B, you are intentionally hurting author's feelings. The C is you were sensitive to the situation. D would be you would have been more direct. And E is I would have slapped you. This sounds like a children's story from the early two thousands, late nineties, you know, back when, you know, they would slap the main character for no reason. It happened a lot. Even Pokemon did it. But let's get back on track. First, we need to schematize this. And the way I schematized it was this. P1 is either A or B. This is a premise. P2 is if C, then not A, premise. P3 was if B, then D, which is a premise. P4 would be if D, then E, which is a premise. P5 is not E, which is a premise. And what we're looking for is you were not sensitive to the situation. Therefore, not C, or not space C. That's more accurate. Now that we know what we're looking for. Come on. Let's do the steps. Step one, we know if B, then E, which is P3, P4, and that is hypothetical sologism. Because in P3, we have if B, then D, if D, then E. One of the rules is if A, then B, if B, then C, then it becomes if A, then C. Step two is not B, and we know this one from S1 and P5. S1, if B, then E, and then the other one is not E, if not, okay, if A, then B, not B, therefore not A. Is the rule, I believe? Allow me to check my little sheet to make sure that I'm correct. If A, then B, not B, therefore A. That's modus tollens. Okay. Which is modus tollens. Step three will be if A, then not space C. Which is using premise two. If C, then not A. And that is contrapositive. Uh, then, then the next one will be S4, which is just A, and we get A from premise one and step two. Premise one is either A or B, but we also know that it's not B, therefore it's A. And then from step five, we get not space C from step three, which is if A, then not space C. Step four, which is A. Therefore, it is not space C, or modus ponens, cuz that's if A, then B, B, uh, A, therefore B. That's how you do the deductive argument example. The next one we have is suppose that the following passage, and I'm going to copy and paste it in, copy. Paste. And this one, to any of you who have been following the news, should be rather memorable as it's one of the coolest, and I mean coolest instances of a purchase I've ever seen. Elon Musk is pulling out of his deal to buy Twitter this month. Twitter's stock owners think that Musk had it out for them from the start. As his own public comments after the forty-four billion dollar deal about the company caused the stock to tank. Musk's stated reason for the back out was that there was a high number of bots on the platform. Twitter representatives claimed that this had to be false, as Musk failed to attend several meetings to discuss bot problems. And there's actually a second paragraph that I did not paste in, my apologies, or maybe I did. Yes, I did. Musk made several tweets that appeared to be making fun of the downward trending stock. He also has publicly condemned Twitter's banning of former President Donald Trump. This further indicated to Twitter that he merely wanted to tank the stock due to a personal vendetta against the company. Alright. So the way we schematize this, so what ended up happening is that when we were set up into groups, I got a team of three. And we all came up with slightly different variations of how we schematized it. However, the schematization ended up being the same. We just put it in different orders. But first, we got us, first we gotta put all the statements together. And the statements that we got were Elon Musk is pulling out of his deal to buy Twitter. The next statement is Twitter stock owners think Musk had it out for them. Musk's comments about the deal caused Twitter stock to tank. The next one is Musk condemned Twitter's banning of Donald Trump. Musk tweeted about making fun of Twitter's stock. There's a different way to write it is that twusk, is that Musk sends out tweets about Twitter's declining stock, but it's the way it is. That's how I wrote it. There was probably a more formal way to write that specific premise. But other than that, this premise is correct. The next one is Twitter representatives claim Musk's claims about bots is false. Or Musk's claim about bots is false. And the final one is Musk failed to attend evidence meetings discussing the bot problem. Now that we have that, and the way I wrote this, I did it in a way, what happened? Uh, okay, weird. I wrote these in a way to ensure that I removed any filler, because I don't need to write down all the stated claims and then remove the filler as I go. I already removed the filler here. So that we can save ourselves some time. But on the exam, you will have to remove the filler yourself. It's not too bad, just connector words and words that don't need to be stated, because they're either not relevant to the argument, or they can be replaced with something shorter. And for the sake of saving time, you, there actually is no importance to the order of the premise, just as long as you stay consistent. So I'll keep them like this, P2, P3, P4, P5, P6, and P7. So yeah, I got seven premises. If you got six, meaning that you formatted your premises a bit differently, that's fine. We just need to ask a few questions, whether or not it's information or evidence, because what we're doing is we're supposing the following passages contain an inference to best explanation. Which means that we need to figure out if we're using info or evidence, and then from there, we needed the test of explanatory power, background knowledge, simplicity, and testability prediction, or testable prediction, depending on how you wanna phrase it. Okay, so Elon Musk is pulling out of his deal to buy Twitter. That's information. We don't need to know that. We don't need to explain it. That's just something that we know for ourselves. Twitter's stock owners think Musk had it out for them. That's information. The next one is Musk's comment about the deal caused Twitter's stock to tank. That's evidence. We want it, we want that explained, at the very least, a little bit. Musk condemned Twitter's ban of Donald Trump. That counts as evidence. Up next, Musk tweeted about making fun of Twitter's stock. That's evidence, cuz that can be used to explain some of the conclusions we could realistically get. Twitter's representatives' claims Musk's claim about bots is false. That claim about the bots being false is just information. We don't actually know that's true. We don't actually need that explained. We just need to know that that case is there for some explanation in the background. I'll let you. And then finally, for P7, Musk failed to attend meetings discussing the bot problem is evidence. There are two claims in the, in the text. The first claim, so claim one in terms of order, is that Musk's reason for backing out of the deal is due to the high amounts of bots on the platform. And the second claim. Notice how it's asking you to use the claim given in the text, and then one more possible claim, not claim, conclusion, so you get two conclusions in total. And normally, you get the bank claim, and then you make one, but in this case, two claims are already given to you, therefore you only need to use these two. The other claim is effectively the final sentence, and that is Musk wanted to tank Twitter's stock due to a vendetta against the company. And both of these are pretty unlikely. I can propose a third conclusion, but it's only asking for two. Now we need to start testing. For conclusion one, we have to make some tests here. The first one is the explanatory power. What is it? The explanatory power. Musk's reason for backing out of the deal is due to a high amount of bots on the platform. So the first one is Musk's comments about the deal caused Twitter's stock to think. Uh, C1 is not directly supported by P3. The next piece of evidence is Musk condemned Twitter's banning of Donald Trump. That's an evidence. But does that really say that it's because of the bots? No. C1 is not directly supported by P4. And the next one is Musk tweeted about making fun of Twitter's stock. Uh, yeah, that is, that is something we wanna explain. C1 is not directly supported by P5. Come on, go. The next one is uh, Musk failed to attend evidence meetings discussing the bot problem. And C1 is not directly supported by P7. Note, C1 is that the reason for backing out of the deal is due to high amount of bots on the platform. But given that all the evidence does not show his actual, any care towards the actual amount of bots on the platform, we're gonna go that this conclusion is not very likely. Okay, so in, in, the conclusion is either not very likely or unlikely. Either one is fine, to my knowledge, unless he wants a specific way to spell it out grammatically. But we're not done with this. We also have background information, so background knowledge. Normally, when you do background knowledge, you are able to use outside information to work on it, however, given we have a lot of information already in our schematized argument, we don't have to rely on it. Conclusion one states Musk's reason for backing out of the deal is due to the high amount of bots on the platform. We know that Elon Musk is pulling out a deal to buy Twitter. Fine. We don't need that explained. Twitter's stock owners think Musk had it out for them. Well, given that Twitter's stock owners think Musk had it out for them, C1 is not supported. So it's gonna send it to be, given that Twitter's stock owners believe that Musk had it out for them. P2 does not support C1. I'd like to point out, the reason I ignore P1 is because it's not related to the argument in any such way, other than the fact that Elon Musk is pulling out of the deal, and we already know that. The next one is the next piece of evidence, information is Twitter representatives' claim Musk's claim about false, bots is false. Meaning that P6 directly contradicts C1 in that it goes against Musk's stated claim. And then, that's pretty much it. Therefore. There, dash, for, oh. Therefore, this conclusion is unlikely. Said a claim, therefore, this conclusion is unlikely. The next one has to do with simplicity, simplicity, not simple at all. As it assumes Musk, I mean, it actually, it is simple. Uh, simple in that according to the conclusion, Musk sees a deal breaker within the deal, within the purchase. Which is buying Twitter, but the deal breaker is that there are a lot of bots, a deal breaker. So bots within the purchase, Twitter. So he does not, so in that moment, he can, he would lose interest in the sale. And that's a pretty simple reasoning, okay? If you want to buy something, then you find out that it's not all it's cracked out to be, then you're gonna drop it, okay? If you find a house that you think looks cool, then you find out that it's under the seams of it all, it's, it's breaking down. It has issues with infestation, then you're not gonna want it anymore. And then finally, testability. Testability. Technically, there are ways to test this. So testability is yes, there is. The answer is yes. However, I'm going to explain one way to test it. There are ways to test this. Either we question Elon Musk directly in a way that that increases the chance that he tells the truth. Or we can look at his at his books, assuming we work for him. Otherwise, there is no way we're getting into his financial records without some form of legal action. So it's testable, but it's also very difficult, and you'd be going against one of the richest people of all time, and I wouldn't recommend it. As a whole, C1 is finished, but now let's go to C2. Explanatory power. Explanatory power. So C1 is this. Actually, we're going to C2. Musk wanted to tank Twitter's stock due to a vendetta against the company. Looking at the first piece of evidence, Musk comments about the deal to start to tank evidence, okay? C2, first of all, this is a C2 states, C2 is directly supported albeit tangentially by P3. Musk condemned Twitter's banning of Donald Trump. C2 is also supported by P3, given that P3 offers Elon Musk a motive. The next one is Musk tweeted about making fun of Twitter's stock evidence. In the sense, C2 is supported by P5, given that P5 uh, P5 would align with a person whom has a vendetta against a group, and that group is Twitter. And the next one is P, P7 is sounds as though it went against C1, yet at the same time, C2 will be supported by this action as P7 demonstrates a lack of care for a group slash town hall, given that social media is considered a town hall. Lack of care for a group slash town hall. Which can be explained as a vendetta. Therefore, C2 is very likely. Up next, we have background knowledge. I know that background knowledge could technically be conforming, but I'm just using background knowledge as that's how the teacher's assistant taught it. Up next, for background knowledge, let's look at number one. Uh, Elon Musk is pulling out of his deal by Twitter. Okay, we, we all know that Elon Musk is pulling out of his deal by Twitter. You know what? I actually don't think we need P1. P1 doesn't seem like any part of the argument at all, meaning that we can remove this. And just rename all of these, but for the sake of keeping them all identical, I'm just gonna keep them as the numbers here. If you really want to, you can go and erase all the numbers for the Ps, and then just subtract by one, but honestly, it's not worth it. Just leave them like this for now. And if you think it is worth it, then go for it. I'm not going to stop you. For background knowledge, we look at it, and we say PC2 would confirm the beliefs of the stockholders in P2. The next one for evidence would be Twitter's representatives' claim Musk's claim about bots is false. C2 also aligns with contradicting C1, and would seem to implicate uh, Elon Musk as a vindictive person with a vendetta against Twitter dot com. Well, I don't need the dot com. I just need a part thriller. Twitter, and then the next one is well, no, that's pretty much it for that one. Therefore, C2 is likely. However, when it comes to simplicity, not simple at all, given that it attributes motive to an individual, and implicates groups that may or may not be involved. And by that, I mean Tesla Corporation, but you don't need to write that down. And then finally, for testability. I mean, I guess you can, it is testable, testable, assuming you can take Elon Musk to court, which they're actually going to do according to what they said they would do. Now, will they actually go through with it? I don't know. And then, we finally determined it, but however, we do have to determine which one is the best explanation. C2, given that it is explained within the premises, while it is not as simple as conclusion one, there is more support for it. Therefore, C2 is the better explanation given that there is more support for it. Which is what we need to do. Now that we've done that, that's how you'll do one of those inference to best explanation problems. They're pretty long, they're kinda grueling, but when you finish them, it's almost like a magic. As in, a giant burden has been removed off you. But let's continue. Consider the following sampling procedure. First, identify both the sample and the targeted population and the sample that it's supposed to represent. Then say the trait the sample and the general position are supposed to have, give at least two reasons why the sample might not be representative of the targeted population. So we have this. Whoa, okay, that's not what I needed. I threw sticks at one or two fences at the prison, and they did not shock me. Therefore, all fences at the prison will not shock us. Okay, I'm gonna tell you this right now. This is not a good argument, but that's not what we're looking for. Let's actually play our little game here. So with the two steps, first step is identify sample and the targeted population. So the first one, sample, is the one or two fences in the prison that the prisoner, that I, apparently I am in prison, even though I'm not in prison, that I threw sticks at. The representative, so the entire group, the targeted population is all of the fences in the prison. Okay, I give two reasons why it might not be representative. But I'll give the trait first, I need to give the trait, trait, both of these. The sample and population targeted population are both related in that they cohere to the limited space of a prison. Meaning that they are the fences of the prison. And now we need to give the two reasons, so step two. Two reasons why they are not representative. Well, first, if anyone representative, you guys know this. Well, first, if anyone representative, you guys know this, you'll know that prisons tend to have more than four fences. In fact, they tend to have a lot of fence everywhere. They gotta protect, they gotta prevent the prisoners from escaping and getting into polite society. So reason one is the sample size is simply not large enough. And I can back that up by saying, uh, to back up this claim, I can say that either those two fences were never supposed to have the capability of shocking someone. Or, or an error occurred that simply prevented the one or two fences from shocking I. And I use I instead of me because we're just gonna say I is the person's name as I myself never went to prison. And then the other one is the sample is not random. And I'll back that one up, so reason two. Sample is not random. I will back it up by saying to back up this claim, I can say that it is possible to stipulate that the guards knew where the prisoners would be and simply turned off the electricity to those specific fences. You don't actually need to give the stipulation, the to back this up claim, I just do that for the sake of you so that you can trust me. Fair enough. The next one will be, consider the following passage and give a structured paraphrase. The following passage is this. Ouch, my cat just bit me. It must be because she is hungry. All right, first, we need to separate the claims. Claim one is my cat just bit me. Then we put our brackets. She, meaning the cat, my cat is hungry because we're removing the filler. And then if we pay attention, we remove the ouch because that is a filler word. It's just an exclamation to denote that you are in pain. When it says must be, however, we've reached into the turn realm of hybrids. They are not always hybrids. But typically, when it says must be, there's gonna be two. So it's a cause, so what caused my cat to bite me? She is hungry. But since it's a must be, that means we concluded something. We concluded that the cat is hungry because she bit me. And that is how you would give a structured paraphrase. Final one, consider the following argument from analogy. Schematize the argument using the form disgusting class. Then cite some possible relevant dissimilarities that weaken the argument. All right then, let's do it. Copy. Whoa, long one. That's fine. Give me a quick second to just make sure that all of these will fit, otherwise it just won't be correct. A good republic is structured the same way the rational mind is in that there is just balance when a higher faculty rules over a lawyer, a lower faculty. In the mind, we are not free if we let our higher faculty be dominated by our passions and emotions. Therefore, we are not free in a republic if we let the merchants rule over our rational leaders. To begin this one, I need to explain the analogous analogy, which is P one. X and Y are analogous. P two is X has feature F. Therefore, in the conclusion, we'll have Y has feature F. Fair enough. Now that we have those, let us schematize this properly. P one would be let's see here, a good republic is structured the same way the rational mind is, there is just a balance with a higher faculty, lower faculty. We're not free, therefore, okay. Uh, it'll be our mind and a good republic are analogous. Okay? P two will be our mind is not free. Okay, our mo- our mind has a feature where if it is not free, where it is not free, if we let hi- our higher faculty be dominated by our passions and emotions. Passions and emotions can be seen as the merchants, as in they're the ones who have the pa- they give the passion to the people. You buy stuff from them either because you need it or because you're passionate about what you're buying. And at the same time, it could be your emotional control. Sometimes they sell you a product like a movie. And or they're selling you some nice deal per se, such as a merchant going, hey, prescribe X drug to your patients and we'll pay for your daughter's college. And that's not a good thing because that's technically bribery, but it doesn't go against any of the rules of bribery, given that it's not a numerical number. But that's just something else to deal with and not a part of the argument itself. So how we actually end this argument would be this. Our, no, I bet, a good republic has a feature where it is not free if we let the higher faculty be dominated by and in the case of higher faculty uh, be dominated by merchants. Passions and emotions are analogous to merchants, by the way, and higher faculty for the mind will be reason. And higher faculty for a good republic is rational leaders. Which is fine, they're both technically part of the reasoning area. But now we need to do the goodness test. The goodness test, P one, is that is P one true? What are the similarities between X and Y? Is P two true? And what are the dissimilarities between specifically, which one again? Between the mind and the civilization, okay? And what are the similarities between X and Y? Between X and Y. Is P one true? In the way that the argument is presented, yes, P one is true insofar as it is presented within the analogy. Well, the analogical argument. Analogical? Is it an analogy argument, analogical argument? You get the point. The dis- the similarities between X and Y have to do with, well, let me see. The goodness test is, are there similarities between X and Y? Well, the similarities to X and Y exist, given that they are a form of power that manages how should I say, lesser, either in importance or numerically or functionally. That manages lesser aspects of what they are running. Insofar that the mind runs both your rationalization, it runs your body, it runs everything. Well, actually, the brain does it, but we're gonna use the mind for this one. The mind is like what you choose to do. Is P two true? Our mind has a feature that if it is free, uh, we have to, we can't be done. That's true, okay? Uh, that's why, say like, uh, alcohol, uh, substance abuse, pornography and all of that is very, very strong against the mind, where it's not really free because you're addicted to something. Let's say dopamine would be the greatest example here. Dopamine is what prevents people from actually being free. As a lot of people just can't handle the removal of dopamine from their lives. Therefore, they are sent in a way that that controls your mind. Therefore, P two is true. Given the stated reasons. However, are there dissimilarities? The dissimilarities between X and Y are that a good republic attempts to manage multiple people, whereas the mind is trying to manage one person directly. And by directly, I mean, yes, you can use your mind to manipulate someone else. But that's, but that's not your mind doing it. That's your mind convincing another mind to manipulate the person into doing that something else and that is not analogous. But these are the big sim- dissimilarities. And that is how you would schematize the analogous argument and citing some possible similarities that weaken the argument. That is the entire practice exam sample problem solved through. Pass your exams, okay? You, I need you to. I want you to pass your exams. Have a good day.